All aldermen are present. Tonight I would like to congratulate the Tannodale High School volleyball team on a memorable season coached by Ms. Kim Peabody. Riverton Tournament champions, Apollo Conference champions, first conference championship since 1992, third straight regional championship, finished the season with a thirty and nine record, the first team ever in Tannodale history to win thirty games. I'd like to especially honor the following seniors that will come here and step over to my right. Natalie Snyder. Madeline Brown. McKenna Anderson. Reagan Morrison. Elizabeth Curtin. Courtney Coy. And Sidney Larson. These eight senior girls won over one hundred games in their THS varsity career. Furthermore, three of these seniors set single-season and career records at THS. Alderman, the 2018 THS volleyball team. The rest of the team can come forward also. I'll give this to Hudson, you guys can put this on the trophy case. It says, "Whereas the THS volleyball team has shown perseverance, hard work, dedication, and great coaching, and whereas the THS volleyball team are the current Riverton Tournament and Apollo Conference champions, won their third straight regional championship, and finished with a thirty and nine record for the season, and now therefore I, Bruce Berry, Mayor of the City of Tannodale, do hereby proclaim November fifth, two thousand and eighteen as THS volleyball day." Congratulations. Due to a few timing issues, I have another honorary I'd like to honor tonight. Tonight I would like to honor the Tannodale FFA chapter led by advisors Sue Schaefer, Katie King, Lori Parks, and their most prestigious alums who received the American Star Award. Ben Curtin received this particular award that recognizes only one single individual nationwide for their excellent in agribusiness. The highlight of Ben's week at the recent FFA National Convention was getting to meet Sam Allen, the CEO of John Deere. He also got to meet President Trump, who gave him the award. Mr. Curtin will be graduating from Purdue University this fall and return to Central Illinois to take a position with GSI as a new product engineer. Ladies and gentlemen and aldermen, Mr. Ben Curtin. Whereas to really excel in any one field, a person must demonstrate in addition to a great deal of natural ability, an outstanding spirit of knowledge, dedication, enthusiasm, and hard work, and whereas Ben Curtin was awarded the FFA American Star Award for excellence in agribusiness, which recognizes a single individual nationwide, now therefore I, Bruce Berry, Mayor of the City of Tannodale, do hereby proclaim November sixth, which is tomorrow, two thousand and eighteen, as Ben Curtin Day. There's cake and ice cream downstairs for the volleyball team and the FFA and their parents, so you guys are welcome to enjoy the ice cream. Congratulations. See ya. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. We should have plenty of cake, Alderman, so they don't have to worry. Okay. I'm just voting doesn't make sense. Motion Alderman Dorcheness, second alderman Jones. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion approved eight to zero. Minutes of the public hearing held October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the public hearing held October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the regular meeting held October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the finance committee meeting held October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the ordinance committee meeting held October eighteen, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the public facilities committee meeting held October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Minutes of the street sewer committee meeting held October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Most approve? Most of them. Second alderman Walters, questions or comments? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion carries eight to zero. Plan commission, recommission, recommendations. Chairman Cratchit?
If I don't get this straight, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ramona for the wording. The first thing on our agenda was the Steak and Shake site plan, and we passed it unanimously with a few exceptions. The city council is going to deal with an easement that they need from Stellar and Morton's, and the sidewalk on the west side of the property is going to be added, and also a lighting plan okayed by the city engineer, and also a complete hydraulic study. And our recommendation is to accept it.
If I might summarize, Mr. Chairman, if you please, I think what your recommendation is, is to approve the site plan as presented with the following conditions as raised by your city engineer, that there must be a sidewalk on the west side of the roadway installed, that the necessary hydraulic calculations must be submitted to the city engineer for approval, and the lighting plans must be submitted to the city engineer for his approval, and it is also subject to the execution of the necessary easements that the city may require from the Morton property and from the Solar Trust property where the Steak and Shake site is going to be constructed.
That's correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's fair to it.
That's the motion and recommendation, so you guys can then vote that up or down.
Motion. Motion Alderman Bud. Second alderman Burdell. Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Let me interrupt for a moment. Alderman Bud raised a valid question in the recess report that with this approval, they can get started with construction, but before an operating permit is granted, they're going to have to get these easements executed and recorded as we require, so.
Okay, the next item was the ordinance change on lighting in residential specific to a six-by-eleven lighted signet, a new water treatment plant, and that was also passed unanimously with an amendment saying that they couldn't change it from what it is.
If I can maybe add a little bit, if you look at the proposed ordinance, I think what the plan commission was recommending, where it says, "Provided however," everything after that will say this, it'll say, "Provided however, a twelve-foot wide by six-foot high sun with only one light thereon may be located and maintained on the municipal public water treatment plants and related facilities, buildings, and land uses." Is your recommendation?
My recommendation.
Motion Alderman Burdell, second alderman Dorcheness, roll call.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, on the last item was the application for special use submitted by the Tannodale Memorial Hospital to build an eighty-foot-tall lattice-style telecommunication tower and Special use for the written findings and facts of recommendation, and in the back of the ordinance you'll see the waivers are fifteen-foot height limitation, notification by mail to owners of existing telecommunication antennas, and a waiver for the five-hundred foot or closer, and that was approved unanimously.
My recommendation was to recommend the adoption of the orders as written presented to the plan commission.
Motion to accept.
Motion Alderman Jones, second alderman Walters, have a comment?
My comment is, thank God, it's about time we got this approved. This is it, right?
This is it. Well, we gotta do the orders, but yeah.
Roll call.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Mr. Merritt, I think you can now proceed with the actual ordinance for that, that's
the next item when you're.
Thank you, Chairman Cratchit. An ordinance granting special use for a telecommunication tower and a antenna with related facilities to Tannodale Memorial Hospital. Motion Alderman Walters, second alderman.
That would be me.
Boda. Roll call.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Just note, Madam Court, that this is published in patent form, so it will be officially in effect ten days after tomorrow.
The hospital's welcome to have cake and ice cream. Thank you very much.
We might draw our own little party.
Thank you, thank you. An ordinance submitting the last sentence of paragraph A of section ten dash four dash two of chapter four of title ten of the Tannodale City Code exempting municipal public water treatment plants and related facilities, buildings, and lands in R1 District from any signs required, or that of amended to.
So we're going to add the language, "Provided however, a twelve-foot wide by six-foot high sign with only one light thereon may be located, maintained on the sites of municipal public water treatment plants and related facilities, buildings, and land uses."
Motion Alderman Burdell. Second alderman Dorcheness. Roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Mayor votes.
Mayor Berry.
The mayor votes yes, motion carries nine to zero. An ordinance submitting sub-paragraph B two of section eight dash four dash nine of the Tannodale City Code, electric water bills. Motion Alderman Burdell.
Second chairman.
Second alderman Walters. Comments or discussion, question?
I have a question, because I drafted it as written in the minutes, but I'm not sure if that makes sense. When you look at the second sentence, it says, "On the twenty-second day of the same month following each due date, a notice shall be given to all of the Lincoln customers of disconnection of service on the seventh day..." Are the dates stated in the notice, or of this notice? That's what was confusing.
I'm going to refer you to Mr. Spiegel, because this is something we've tried to do, because the customers are waiting for the disconnect notice before they're paying their bill. They think that is the bill. So we're trying to get this kind of squeezed together to get to monthly billing, and I'm taking it for granted that Mr. Spiegel has this correct, because this is what he told me he needed.
The only question I raised, Alderman Burdell, was that perhaps the treasurer's office or whoever does this doesn't get this out on the twenty-second day. That's what you want to do.
They take these at the door, I think.
I'm sorry?
Right.
So can we just say, "On or after the twenty-second day, a notice shall be given," so that we don't get someone saying, "We did know on the twenty-second day, therefore it's not a valid term."
Twenty-second could be a Sunday.
So just, if you would please just change it, "On or after the twenty-second day."
Is that going to be dated?
Yep.
Okay.
Twenty-first.
Well, as I said, it may be a holiday.
Is that going to work with you guys?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Okay. I know you take them on the door, right?
Yes, so we're required to hand deliver them. It's not by choice.
Now, what's that, now that what it says there, "A notice shall be given to all the Lincoln customers of disconnection on the seventh day of this notice," so you're saying the seventh day after date of this notice? I think that makes more sense.
You wrote it, I didn't, so no.
I wrote what you had in the committee level, and it didn't make sense.
I think you changed it. Mine made sense.
Seventh day after receipt of this notice?
So there's seven days to pay after the date?
Can somebody just do it and sample? Just maybe, that'd clarify.
The due date is on the fifteenth of the month. We would deliver cutout notices on the twenty-second of the month, and the water would be shut off on the twenty-ninth of the month.
Seven days later.
Seven days later.
So you have seven days to pay.
So if you date it on the twenty-third, you want to say the seventh day after date of the notice, right?
Yeah, that's why we say seventh day. That way if we had to do them.
So you'll use "or after" on what they're working on, and then after the seventh day, we put "after" date of this notice.
Okay.
Does that make sense? It doesn't make sense.
You write what you want, I know what we're going to do.
I'm not questioning.
I think, I think this makes more sense what you are voting. You could have been a little clearer in your, in your presentation.
Clear is better, yes.
No, but I just wanted to get some clarification. If the twenty-second falls on a Saturday, which means we would give the notice out soon on the twenty-fourth.
Unfortunately.
Then they still have seven days.
Yes.
So that would be, wouldn't be the twenty-ninth, it would be the thirty-first.
That's why I'm saying, "After the date of notice."
Yeah, that's second of the word.
All right.
So with those changes, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest.
Your changes?
Yes.
Does that represent what you're going to do, Dave?
What?
Does that represent exactly what we're going to do?
I think so.
Roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Mayor Berry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. Resolution, Wilmington installer modes. Oh, excuse me. An order submitting six dash four dash three of the Tannodale City Code, designated yield right of way at Pauline Street at intersection with Kent and Bolt.
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion Alderman Boda.
Second.
Second alderman Walters, answer questions. Roll call.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Mayor Berry.
Yes, motion carries nine to zero. Resolution, Wilmington installer modes, trust easement agreement, acknowledgement, and consent agreements, and a subordination agreement.
Okay.
Motion Alderman Bud.
Second.
Second alderman Walters, questions or comments?
I think you've seen a lot of my emails going back and forth, I think we finally got it correct, and this resolution actually allows the mayor now to send this out, and there's got to be support easements and consent agreements, and Morton and Stellar has not seen it yet, but to expedite this, we're going to resolution, and the mayor doesn't sign it until they sign it. Okay, you're okay with that?
Roll call.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Resolution, the Kim and Morton easement agreement, acknowledgement, and consent agreements. Motion Alderman Bud. Second alderman Walters. Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Lee Landzadi.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Resolution for use of MFT funds for spillway bridge project.
Motion.
Motion Alderman Walters.
Second.
Second alderman Boda. Comment, alderman Walters?
It's taken a long time, and this is the final, so this washes our hands of this, we're done with it.
Is this all kind of motive for tax?
It's passed through.
Okay.
Will this satisfy their inquiry for all the prior years too?
No, we're not going to log it on that. Roll call.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Most allow superintendent Spiegel to bid and advertise water service technician position in the water department.
Make that motion, Your Honor.
Motion Alderman Boda.
Second.
Second alderman Burdell.
Comment.
Alderman Boda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Did talk with Mr. Spiegel regarding this position, this is a replacement for Dick Reeburg, who is recently retired from the staffing here. My concern was, do we really need to replace the individual? I wasn't sure, knowing that the city finances are still being looked tightly at, so I did have a discussion with Mr. Spiegel, asking him to put something together so everybody had justification. He has presented a very good case to replace the individual, we're not adding an individual to the payroll, we're replacing an existing individual, and with the possibility and probably the likelihood of us seeing some retirement out of the office in, within the next year and a half, two years, is what Mr. Spiegel was stating, that this is probably a good move to make sure that people are on board and up to speed by the time that does occur, so I do.
Roll call.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Burdo.
Yes.
Bernie George.
Yes.
Jim Oliver.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Most to me, the finance ordinance committee meeting to Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Motion Alderman Jones, second alderman Bud, alderman Boda.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. City attorney updates.
Two matters, gentlemen, you've been seeing a lot of emails from me concerning these subject matters. One is the Sloan property, the solar energy facilities, we're still working on that, that's going to be brought to you probably December third, meeting, where the annexation, the rezoning, and special use request for the solar energy facilities. I again spoke with plenty of attorneys for the Sloan properties and working on some languages, conditional languages, that would satisfy both Dr. Sloan and Cypress Creek land holdings, so that if there is any transfer of ownership. There is a question, the plan of annexation had to be redone because they were showing your public easement, that was to the center of the property, it was given some years ago, I think two thousand and eleven perhaps, and they weren't including it to be annexed in, they have to redo that because you have to have continuity, as you know, so we didn't have all that information ready for publication, it's read for Friday, so we're about to post on it to December third, but I'll keep keeping you up to date as we go through negotiations through the air. The other thing is on the solar panel contract that you, with the outfit that wants to put the panels on the new water plant, the mayor and I, I think it was last week, had a phone conference with the representative, Jamie, for that project, which are concerned, and I addressed at the last meeting, and I think the ball's with Mike Corrigan, how to get some language, he was receptive to some changes, matter of fact, I think he told the mayor and I that there were, many of the towns had a lot of the same type of questions, and so they're wanting to work with us to try to come up with something, so that's, I haven't got anything to him yet, but the mayor and I had a good conversation with that gentleman.
They must have good attorney state.
I'm sorry.
They must have good attorney state.
Well, not as good, but yeah.
Here, but you're going to need shoulder surgery.
Okay. Is there any questions from that? Okay, that's it, gentlemen.
There you go.
That's it?
Sure.
It is.
The weather is changing. I would like to thank the four aldermen that showed up for the cleanup day on the past Saturday. Thank you to the police and fire department for the Halloween event, it went over well, we had over four hundred drinks. We continue to do work on Walnut and East Main Cross Streets. Tonight we approved the site plan for Steak and Shake, and also the special use for the communications tower at the hospital. Negotiations with AFSCME continues, we look forward to settling that in the near future. We've also began work on the drainage area north of Allstroms. Positive response from the new speed limit sign that the police have been moving around our city. Our police also been getting good response from the safe passage program that we're now involved with. Things continuing to move in a very positive direction. I want to thank you all, and for approving some of the things that we've tried to get done over the last year and a half. This week, the thirtieth annual YMCA auction is Friday evening at the Pillars, and Saturday is the high school playoffs at six o'clock Saturday evening against Rodchester. Hope to see many of you at these events. Thank you. Discussions and/or motions.
May I interrupt you for a moment, because I think we forgot to bring up that some positive news on that home on Heights Avenue that was.
Yes.
Fire damage, we've done some title work on that, Mr. Cowherd informed me this evening, he's been in contact with the owner of the property, and they agreeable to having us demolish it and tear it down, so.
We sent her the agreement this afternoon in the mail, since she signs it, gets it back to, we will demolish that house.
So that's moving forward.
Alderman Walters?
Hi, it just brought to my attention from the audit just a moment ago, that that speed sign that we are taking around town, that it was furnished from the water department.
Okay.
And we brought it to my attention by Madam Spiegel.
Yeah, safety, but we're the ones moving around, huh?
Why does it only work to the three Z's? Why does it only work two or three days in a row?
They're supposed to, uh, they're supposed to come look at it, um, I'm not sure if it was today, this week. He's supposed to come see whether the solar panels aren't been, uh, recharged. Because we took it out, recharged batteries, and so they're gonna go through it and see if it's panels. We got a faulty battery or whatever.
I would say I follow that for the first day, pardon, today. And although there is no consequences for speeding and flashes and that all that, you see more brake lights on, brake lights on that road now than you've ever seen. It gets everybody, and I think the red and blue lights, or anything more of those. That, I think that's what grabs their attention. They get them to slow down a little bit.
Or they drive.
Red light if it's over seventy-five.
They are.
Alright, thank you. Did you say Earl said? Uh, I don't know if it was Earl or Donald, but I probably did. Discussions and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee and hold in part of matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Finance committee.
Thank you.
And the Alderman Bud?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Motion to recommend the city council to allow Ricardo to complete an energy audit study and no cost to the city. Make that form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Dorton, ask question?
I should ask you this before, what, um, how do they make money on this?
If they get the contract and they start saving us on the energy costs, that's where they make their money.
We pay them for the, we use the savings to pay them to do what is gonna cause the savings to happen, right?
Yeah, and the other savings is put in there to be able to do infrastructure improvements. Wouldn't he tell us that night that they have like a seventy percent or something like that? Do you remember?
None, I don't remember his, his actual numbers. All I know is that, uh, if we finance the plan, we use the savings to pay off the improvements that we had. And anything after that we use, we can use for infrastructure or other improvements.
And once they do this energy audit, they guarantee the savings. So it's not like they're gonna say things on me. Alright. Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Martin Boda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, the next motion was to recommend the city council to create six thousand to the Christian County Economic Development Corps contingent upon the reinstatement of five oh one C three status. Make that form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Jones. I might add, Gary Spurling called me this afternoon. He'd like to be here to thank us for this. And, uh, he's stuck up in Chicago along with the vice president of the C C E D C, so no one can be here to personally thank us, but they're under oath, so.
Your Honor.
Alderman Walters.
Do we know where the status is at this point on the five oh one C three?
Uh, no, we don't.
I'm not, I don't know where it is, but I'm sure we'll find out next week if I have to.
And we'll move. Alderman Bud, has no.
Yeah, I, I might commentally make a vote. And Alderman Boda had a very good question posed to me, uh, before we started this meeting tonight. And that was on the agenda. I'm looking at the agenda, the agenda for the finance committee meeting. And on the line item, it was for Christian County Economic Development update. And he was asking me procedurally, uh, whether or not we could take action on that kind of a clause in the, in the, on the agenda. I informed him, yes, uh, because if you look at the language that you read on the committee reports, I think I drafted that years ago. It really is repreferencing for the following subject matters. As I always claim to prior, uh, councils and city clerks, my understanding of the open meetings act is that you put on the agenda, uh, enough information to let the public decide whether they want to stay home and watch the Cardinals beat the Cubs in a ballgame, or come to the meeting and argue and, and, and consider and give opinions about what's on the agenda. I think there was enough here, so the answer, Mr. Boda, I think that it was a good question, but I think you're fine. They're good. I think you're alright. And it was an update, so it was apparently requested and been ongoing. So I think you're okay, but that was a fair question, so.
Now, do you have one comment, Your Honor? Uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and support this. The, uh, the thing, and I talked with Mr. Bud last week also. Uh, we've donated or assisted with a hundred thousand dollars to the managing grant funds for the T D A. We've also committed to, uh, involvement with the enterprise zone expansion and renewals. And right now, and Larry is in agreement with me, I believe, that we have a company who is out there trying to gain the funds to pursue this. Correct? Okay, and at this time, we have not heard any feedback from that organization as to where they're at, whether they are actually actively doing this. And if they do not pursue this actively, then it sounds as if the city of Terreville may be held responsible for the needs and the finances of this particular, uh, pursuit. The thing I would like to see is some sort of a response from this company, maybe monthly or every couple of months, as to where we're at financially, which gives them a little bit of a kick in the butt to say, hey, guys, we, we're being monitored, so we have to show we're doing something. Otherwise, they, they may sit back and say, uh, the city of Terreville's gonna pick this up, so let's, let's do what we can, but, but, you know, they're gonna take care of it anyway. So I would like to see some sort of response from the company, an update as to where they're at with their finances on, on this ongoing project. Because it's a critical piece of, uh, of, uh, it's a critical tool for us to use to try to incite some, uh, development movement. So just wanted to say this.
Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
And the last motion was to.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Moving along.
Sorry.
Uh, the last motion was to move, uh, to further the Fraser. Make that form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Boda. Roll call.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Ordinance committee, Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we had, uh, one motion to recommend that city council to direct city attorney to prepare ordinance, meaning the class A one to a limit of twelve liquor licenses, C one to a limit of twelve liquor licenses, A two to a limit of five liquor licenses, and C two to a limit of three liquor licenses. I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Olive. Question?
Question? I wasn't present with that. Well, I guess I was, unless I say for this, this item, what's the, these new limits reflect on what as far as the ordinance. Are we two or three ahead? Are we the same?
Well, the, the reason I asked Mr. Jones to put this on the ordinance committee was we've gotten applications from legitimate, what I call legitimate restaurants and bars, meaning the place next to the west side, the place on one oh four that used to be McCarty's or Ray's place. And the current ordinance did not allow us to have any more liquor licenses. So I asked Mr. Jones if we would cap the A two and the C two, which are the so-called parvers, at the limit they're on now. And that would allow us to offer these A one and C one licenses to legitimate restaurants and bars. And it passed unanimously with the council.
Question? Okay, these, uh, these increases, are they to allow gaming in these establishments or just a liquor license?
No.
Okay.
Roll call.
Lee Landzadi?
No.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
No.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Second. You can pass. Um, I'll go with another.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries five to two.
Um, the, one other thing that I'd like to say is, um, having to deal with the ordinances, we had all of the ordinances and the resolutions and all of the work that the city attorney has done, especially over the last three months, uh, with Steak and Shake and, uh, the other properties with H S H S. Uh, he's, he's been working hard. And if you look at some of the emails that we received, they're not at eight, nine in the morning. They're at eight, nine at night, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock. And he doesn't get overtime, but he gets the job done. And I'd just like to give you, uh, combination for that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you. Public facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion to recommend the city council to allow Chuck Bowler to complete roof repairs on the gagging building that cost nine to exceed thirty-six hundred dollars. I'd put that in form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Olive, second by Alderman Bud. Roll call.
I ask that that motion be amended to subject to the execution of the city's form contract. That includes the imposition of the preventing wages insurance and the requisite bond. Because what we learned at the municipal league, this is gonna require preventing wages for sure.
That, uh, he's, he's a one man.
What we learned at the, uh, municipal league was, so proprietorship, self-employed individuals have to be, there are studies to the billion wage act, which surprised me, but that's what we were doing.
Well, I, I must have really done just an oversight on my part.
It was. I, I, you were gonna say, but I just wanted to bring that just in case.
Check these priorities.
Roll call.
He changed the bid.
Well, no, what, what, what they're saying is that you, you keep the bid at three, six hundred. They just have to show that they're paying themselves for the wage. Making sure how they want, but they have to pay the wage to themselves.
Roll call to.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
That would be the same language on the next two motions.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, the next motion, um, to recommend to the city council to accept a proposal from Duckett Carpet Care at a cost of twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-seven seventy for the cleaning of the carpets, stripping and waxing of all hard surface floors and cleaning all windows and municipal building. Put that in form of motion.
Motion by Alderman Olive?
With the same addition to.
All the previous verbiage.
Motion by Alderman Olive, second by Alderman Bud. Uh, roll call.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, the, uh, motion, motion to recommend the city council to enter into a one-year maintenance contract, yard heating and cooling for the missed billing and the cost of two thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. I'd like to also put that in form of motion with all the previous verbiage.
Motion by Alderman Olive, second by Alderman Walters. Roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Street and sewer, Alderman Walters.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two motions and also one item of, of information for you. Motion to recommend the city council to allow superintendent Wiseman to send two employees to factories twenty-one hundred plus operators training camp, November the sixth of the eighth, two thousand eighteen, in Ottawa, Illinois, to cost not to exceed one thousand dollars.
Motion by Alderman Walters?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Olive. Roll call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdo?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Motion to recommend the city council to approve the special event request for the first annual three point oh fifty trot, give go and gobble for the table food pantry to be held Saturday, November seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, nine thirty a.m., eleven o'clock a.m.
Motion by Alderman Walters?
Second.
Second by Alderman Jones?
What was that called again?
Give go and gobble.
I'm gonna give you credit anywhere.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The, and my, either of us to have you gentlemen is that we do not anticipate having a street and sewer meeting and/or total facilities meeting on Thanksgiving. In other words, no meeting. And I said, if something comes up, we'll put it on the council agenda and anticipate possibly not having a meeting in December.
Thank you, Alderman Walters. Motion to approve and or ratify payment of bills, Alderman Bud?
Uh, make that form of motion with a comment?
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Walters. Go ahead.
Insurance, one hundred three thousand eight hundred sixty-eight eighty-eight, presented by Public Risk for December, twenty-four thousand four hundred eighty-seven. Total insurance is one, one hundred twenty-eight thousand three hundred fifty-five eighty-eight. Electric, nineteen thousand five hundred seventeen point one. Telephone, four thousand five hundred seventeen point four. Garbage, three thousand six hundred eighty-eight. Office supplies, one thousand six hundred thirty-nine thirty-six. Meyer Austin and Nano, eight thousand five hundred eighty. Altro for eight thousand six hundred sixty-seven fifty-eight. Hyrotechnology for software support, one thousand one hundred nineteen oh two. United Capital Funding for corporate health, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-three forty. Government Department of Revenue for gas sales tax, one thousand five hundred forty-seven. Police Department, first bid bank and trust patrol car, uh, vehicle, one of three, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-two fourteen. C M B Bank and Trust for patrol vehicles, the final payment, twenty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-one forty-six. Stocker Radio for antenna repair, one thousand four hundred six. Rail Heron for K nine, six thousand forty-one. Artifiles, Robo, RoboTronics, Spark, for Sparky, sixty-three hundred. Five thousand of this is being reimbursed for the fire, fire district. And then, uh, the other part.
I believe from what Chief Cruz said, five thousand of it was to come from the general fund for, uh, and then the remaining, I believe, was to come from the fire department community bank account that they have, the remaining, so.
This should pay this off. Um, Cyclocorp cardiac monitor, uh, one thousand three hundred fifty-five fifty-six. Street Department, Green and Bradford, Curvallman Street, nine thousand two hundred fifty-one fifty.